Lewiston City Council will come to order for the regular meeting of May 12, 2025, at the time and place as advertised. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please stand and join us in reciting our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the free public, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens wishing to comment on agenda items or other matters they wish to bring to the council's attention, excluding those scheduled for a public hearing. As there may not be another opportunity to comment, once the agenda item is addressed, individuals are encouraged to speak at this time. Individuals are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor, in consideration of others wishing to speak. Commentary is limited to three minutes. Do we have citizen comments tonight? So we will move on to Roman number four, presentations. Counselors, I'm going to turn the gavel over to Council President Kleberg, so I can stand down below and present all three proclamations. So Council President Kleberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at this time, we have a proclamation for National Police Week, which Mayor Johnson's going to present down there to our Chief of Police. Okay, item B, we have another proclamation. This is for National Public Works Week. Mayor's going to present to Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director.
So next week is National Public Works Week. And this year. Five, we'll show you some who do every act there. Thank you, sir. And just welcome back. Folks that are listening from home. So the whole weekend, National Public Works Week, whatever. Also, I reckon.
Okay, we have one more. This is also a proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council President Kleberg. Council, next up, we have item five, Public Hearings and Related Action Items. Item A, Public Hearing G eight dash zero one dash three five, accepting testimony on amendments to Lewiston zoning code sections thirty seven dash three and thirty seven dash one five three landscaping, adding clarification to the current parking lot landscaping purpose and requirements, adding consistency between code section provisions, changing required landscape planter widths, adding provisions for maintenance, and omitting unnecessary and redundant provisions. This is an action item, and we have our city planner with us, Mr. Joel Plaskon. Also, this is how the public hearing process will work. I will open the public hearing. We'll have a staff presentation for Mr. Plaskon. Then we'll accept testimony from the public if there is any. Counselors, you will have time then to ask questions of the staff and persons providing testimony. No additional evidence or testimony may be received once the public hearing is closed. So again, this is your time to ask any questions you might have. After that, I will close the public hearing. So with that, I will open the public hearing, six twelve, and invite Mr. Plaskon to the stand there. I think you have to talk from that one right there, Joel. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Joel Plaskon, Lewiston City Planner. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My presentation's going to be very brief. This is what the mayor read off the agenda describes the proposal very well. I'll add that this proposal began at the level of the Comprehensive Plan/Work Plan Committee. We had the Chair of the Urban Forest Treaty Commission and two local landscape contractors join us in developing this proposal. From there, it was moved to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They conducted a public hearing on April ninth. They heard no public testimony on the matter, but they voted unanimously that the council approved this proposal, and that's via ordinance forty nine forty-two, which is your next agenda item. With that, I'd stand for questions.
Thank you, Joel. Counselors, do you have any questions for Mr. Plaskon? Council President Kleberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Joel, the way I see it is we're adding a little vegetation to the requirements.
Yes, that's true. Shade trees in particular.
Well, and then the shrubs.
And shrubs as well, yep.
Increasing the.
Yeah, increasing the planter width. The local landscape contractors told us that the three-foot planter width option was not wide enough for a lot of the trees. I'm sorry, the two-foot planter width. So it's being proposed to increase the smaller one from two to three feet to give the trees more room to grow.
Thank you.
Counselor Forstman?
Um, and this, is this something that only if they're re, if they're, it's like a new development, not existing or?
New development and redevelopment.
Oh, and redevelopment. So if someone, I don't know, bought Kmart, would they be required to?
They would be if they were reconstructing the parking lot as part of that redevelopment. For instance, up at the Lewiston Center Mall, when Winco moved in there, they were required to retroactively add the landscaping because it didn't exist.
Counselor Wright?
Yeah, thank you. So what I'm reading in the purpose, landscaping requirements are to be an integral part of site and parking lot development, redevelopment. The intent is to create shade, reduce heat buildup, reduce barren appearances of parking lots, create aesthetic environment environments, buffer adjoining land uses, slow storm water runoff, mitigate pollution while maintaining design flexibility. The stormwater runoff, I, in some of these parking lots I've been in, I see the slope, Winco might be a good one. The slope's coming downward. I see the planters going down that slope, and they're surrounded by concrete that's raised up off the ground. I'm curious, how does this prevent stormwater runoff?
It doesn't prevent it, excuse me, what it does, and Public Works Director Johnson could probably talk about it better than I am because it's a vision within his department. But what the landscaping does is it slows the rate of the stormwater runoff.
But it's not, yeah, it just seems confusing because it's going with the slope and there's nowhere, like the water's not going to come up and get, it's just going to keep running down that sheet of pavement. I guess that's, that's it.
Thank you, Counselor Forstman. Please turn on your microphone.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I think my biggest concern is like, are we getting, is this going to cause more restriction for people wanting to come and develop? Are we just giving them another barrier? And if so, is there a way we can make this even less restrictive? I just wonder, is this going to, how much can they move this? If they're like, I have this parking lot, but it doesn't really work for my parking lot. Is it flexible enough for me to still be within the guidelines? And I'm having a hard time visualizing those types of scenarios, and so I do have concern with this code just causing kind of red tape for people wanting to come in and develop.
So in response to that, I'll say that these requirements already exist. We're making amendments to them. There are flexibility provisions in this section of the code. They don't appear in the ordinance that you've got in front of you tonight because they're at the tail end where we didn't make any amendments. And we often work with developers to give them options in providing landscaping in other locations and grouping and clustering landscaping versus having it all in a strip. So we do, we do work with the developers for flexibility for them.
Council President Kleberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Joel, that's before your time, but I was on planning and zoning when we actually started this process back in probably about 2005. And that's where we had the, established the thirty-five feet between the inch-and-a-half caliper trees and five feet between the shrubberies that were going to be required. I think it's a good idea. You know, I don't look at it as a detriment to development, planting the trees, planning for the irrigation of the trees, since you can't just plant a tree and not have irrigation out inside a little curb-off area and expect the tree to survive. It does cut down on the heat, signature from the parking lots. I mean, it's been proven many, many times. And I think, in the whole, from a development standpoint, it makes a lot of sense. Makes for a more attractive presentation. So I'm in favor.
Joel, could you just briefly touch on posting a bond or not?
Yeah, so that's one of the areas where we've decreased the burden that some of these codes have on developers. Rather than post a bond, what we thought was a better idea was to just simply get a written commitment from them. If due to season conditions, the timing's not right to put the landscaping in, or for whatever other reason, we give them the certificate of occupancy simply upon them submitting a letter stating that they commit to having it installed by a certain date in the next season. And that's just a lot simpler for them than posting a bond.
Sounds like it might be a little bit less costly, too.
Yep.
Counselor Schroder?
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance number forty nine forty-two.
Excuse me, Mayor, the public hearing is still ongoing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is there any public testimony? Counselor, if there's no further questions for Mr. Plaskon, I will close the public hearing. Thank you. Counselors, next up, we have five B, first reading of ordinance forty nine forty-two. Considering amending Lewiston City Code section thirty seven dash three relating to the definition of parking lot, amending Lewiston City Code section thirty seven dash one fifty-three relating to landscaping, this is an action item. We heard from our city planner, Mr. Joel Plaskon. Counselor Schroder?
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance number forty nine forty-two.
Thank you.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Council President Kleberg, to approve the first reading of ordinance number forty nine forty-two. Is there further discussion or amendments? Counselor Wright?
Yeah, just discussion. I think at the moment, there's, there's a lot going on in this particular section for me to provide a decent amendment, maybe in potentially one of the next readings. But my concern with this is the goal, purpose, isn't something that I would see straightforward part of city business, which would be stormwater runoff. That would seem to me a legitimate reason for something like this. But maybe there's other ways to address it than putting in sprinkler systems, planting trees, planting shrubs. And so it just concerns me that this points, this purpose, this is a minor piece with stormwater runoff, and it goes into mitigate pollution, aesthetics. And I really just don't think it's the business of the city to tell builders how to build. So I do have a lot of concern with this particular ordinance.
Counselor President Kleberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just, I refer to section two, which has been amended, section thirty seven dash one fifty-three under landscaping. And the purpose, the purpose for this would be an integral part of site and parking lot development and redevelopment. The intent is to create shade, reduce heat buildup, reduce the barren appearance of parking lots, create aesthetic environments, buffer adjoining land uses, and slow stormwater runoff and mitigate pollution while maintaining design flexibility. And I, to me, that sums the whole thing up. We had a couple of examples that were just barely touched on, but you've got the Kmart parking lot, which of course isn't Kmart anymore, the Lewiston Center Mall, we could take it further up to the old ShopCo parking lot. These are gigantic areas that are just paved with no shade. They, it's to the detriment of the city.
Counselor Forstman?
I guess I'm, obviously shade is important, but I'm just, I'm not seeing how it's a detriment. And obviously, sprinklers are expensive to put in. It's an extra cost for the developer coming in to do things, to develop. And also the water, now they have to put an extra expense to keep plants and their irrigation so that they don't die, which we have seen businesses come in, have that requirement, and then their trees are dead and they're not managing it. So at what point do we say, okay, now your trees are dying? You know, you need to, I mean, how do we, how do we enforce that if they're not keeping up with the shrubs that they're putting in? I'm not against it. I see, I understand we're trying to create aesthetics. I just, I wonder how much of it should be a forced requirement and, or maybe amending it to be a little less restrictive or giving better options. I just, I'm not really on board for this code yet. I just, it doesn't, I don't really see the full, I read the, I read it, and I understand it talks about the irrigation runoff and the pollution. How much really, I mean, what are the numbers? How much are we really doing that? And maybe that's me. Maybe I just need to know that, what's the numbers are, and how much are we really saving in pollution and storm runner, water runoff?
Counselor Schroder?
There is so many reasons to approve this. City of Lewiston has trees, all want, and I just took out trees, and I have to put trees back in the right of way. It's not, it's not, it's not adding too much of, I mean, it's adding beautification to our city. It is making walking through the city and through neighborhoods pleasant instead of sterile. I, how would it look if we just didn't plant trees? How would it look? And this is our city. And I, I think we can maybe go excessive sometimes, but in reality, I think this is, I sat through this, I was on this committee, we all approved it. It was approved by planning and zoning, it was approved by the landscapers, of course. But it's, it's what we do for beautification when, instead of sterile landscape. I don't think any one of us would really like it if we stopped planting trees or took out all the trees that were here in Lewiston. So I think this is silly to fuss over it because it's part of what we do.
Counselor Klein?
I will say that a lot of this is just like Joel had mentioned, it's modifying what we already have in code just to make it so our plants have more room to grow, like the, you know, adding, adding widths to the planters that are already, you know, in city code and making it so that the trees have more room to grow or whatever. But a lot of it is actually being taken out, out of the code, allow us for more wiggle room. If we do have a company that comes in, that maybe they fill the space for parking vehicles.
Council President Kleberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and I'll, I'll just, I'll throw this one out to anybody on the council, or anybody that's listening at home. If, we'll say the third week of July, and we've had a day where the temperature was recorded at a hundred and eight degrees up at the airport, I'll be happy to meet anybody at about nine PM. at about nine PM, and we can go sit in front of the Sportsman's Warehouse for a few minutes and see how nice that parking lot is. And then we'll come down and we'll sit in the, I think it's the parking lot right next door to here, where we have all these big trees, right next to this library. And you tell me which one you'd rather be sitting in when it's been that hot. I mean, this is not that hard to figure out, people.
Mayor.
Counselor Porstman.
I know we're just, we have removed a lot on here, and I see that. I know when I first gone on council, I had heard from businesses and developers, and this was one of the things they brought up, is the tree requirements, because it's not designed for every scenario. So some parking lots that they were requiring a tree didn't really make sense, whereas some maybe do make sense. So I just, I, my concern is this isn't giving a lot of wiggle room for ones that don't make sense. I mean, we have three readings, so it's not like we can't make adjustments. I'm just not sure exactly what adjustments could be made at this point. But our point on council is to revisit these and really consider, is it beneficial or not? I agree with Counselor Kleberg that it is, you know, shade obviously is extremely helpful, but how many trees are we going to have them put? And is it going to be enough to really shade a whole parking lot or a majority of the parking lot to allow people to sit in a parking lot on a hot day and not want to then get out of their car? I don't know how many people are going to sit in a parking lot in their hot car. I don't know.
Counselor Wright.
Yeah. I think there's compromise to be found in just about anything. And maybe that is with what kind of exemptions exist. I mean, development is extremely important, and being able to offer a company that wants to come here, incentives to come here, or, you know, less red tape to come here, and a piece of land that makes sense for them, more exemptions possibly could be in the roadmap for an amendment on this. The other thing I would add is, you know, I have no opposition to trees. I mean, if, if we want more trees, let's, let's have more trees. I would just, I would say if we, if we want more trees around the area to make it look nice, and it does make it look nicer, then let's, let's vote on something like that, and we'll, we'll plant more trees, rather than putting that burden on developers or people that are trying to redo a parking lot that's starting to fall apart. And, and one thing to keep in mind is, these things that we have people put into their buildings or in their parking lots, these can become liabilities. If you have, if you require somebody to build a big shade tree, parts of that tree are going to fall off eventually. What they fall on, those developers are potentially liable for, or at least whoever the current owner is, is liable for, potentially. So I would just add that caution that, you know, some of these things do have some unforeseen consequences down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Schroeder.
As I recall, there was a list of trees to use as street trees that are not the giant Linden-type trees that I just had to take out. So there are size and type that are acceptable.
Thank you, Counselor. Not seen any further comments. I will ask those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you, Counselors Fickemeyer. Motion carries. Clerk Rocky.
Approving the first reading of ordinance forty-nine, forty-two. An ordinance of the City of Lewiston, amending Lewiston City Code Section thirty-seven dash three relating to the definition of parking lot, amending Lewiston City Code Section thirty-seven dash one fifty-three relating to landscaping and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Counsel, next we move to Roman numeral six, the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these issues unless the councilor so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on the active agenda under items moved from the consent agenda. Counselors. Counselor Klein.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Klein, second by Counselor Schroeder, to approve the consent agenda. Clerk Rocky.
Council President Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
Counselor Porstman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder.
Aye.
Counselor Klein.
Aye.
Counselor Sicklemeyer.
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Next we move to the active agenda, Roman numeral seven. Item A, Compensation Review Committee Recommendation. Considering a recommendation from the Compensation Review Committee on the mayor and councilor salaries in accordance with Lewiston City Code, Section two dash twelve B and two dash twenty-two B, this is an action item. We have our Compensation Review Committee chair with us here today, Bob Blakely. Bob, welcome. I'll just have you introduce yourself again for the record, and then turn it over to you.
Well, I wish I could say I was, you know, Bill Gates, and I'm here to fund the city operations for the next five years, since I've decided I'm going to give away all my money, but I don't have that option today. I'm Bob Blakely, former city councillor. I live at six oh one, twenty-third Avenue. I would also like to introduce one of our members to the committee, Sue Brown. She is here tonight. So together, there were four of us. There were five people signed up, but one person chose not to attend any of the meetings. But you'll see on the minutes, it was myself, Sue Brown, Fred Fickenworth, and Hannah Leckie, who attended. We had three meetings, good discussion, probably more discussion than what we had two years ago. And I believe in front of you, you do have the minutes, at least the last-minute meeting, along with a spreadsheet. Am I correct? Do you have that spreadsheet in front of you? Okay, good. So I'm going to break this presentation up into two segments. First of all, how much do you want to get paid, guys, gals? That was a question we asked. What do, what should there be compensation for a city councillor, for council president, or, or a mayor? We did a survey, we used numbers that we saw two years ago, we got them updated, and that was basically the big six or seven cities in the state of Idaho. We did not look across the border. Salary ranges everywhere from mayors making forty thousand dollars a year in Idaho, we did not include Boise, to mayors making one twenty in Idaho. In fact, one of the higher-paid mayors comes from a city with basically eighty-five employees. So go figure, that's probably a good place to go work, and doesn't have a police department, doesn't have a fire department, and doesn't have to worry about the roads. Anyway, councilors, we are on the low end of pay scale of councilors, and that has been the case since I was on the council. When I was on the council was the year that we got a pay raise, where we went from five hundred to seven hundred. And Jim probably remembers that five hundred dollar number was many, many, that lasted many years. So the recommendation was to break this discussion into two parts, and that's how I will present this. I will first talk about council and council president. The committee had decided that rather than just try to pick a number, we decided to do, we decided to take a different approach, and that approach was a pay scale. So that from planning purposes, you'll be able to budget, looking forward, upcoming years, how much the expense of the council will be, and for, for the president of the council. We did separate out, separate out the council president as a higher number. We based this scale essentially on the information that was given to us from the classified, non-classified employees, their, their pay scale, which includes an annual bump plus the cost of living or a COLA. I'll refer to it as a COLA going forward. So if you, if you flip over to this, over to the spreadsheet, you'll see the recommendation, oh, there's one other thing. There are ten steps on the classified employee pay scale. We broke it down to five steps for council and council president, because we felt that every two years, there's an election. And that could change, that could be, that could change the outcome of the council, it could also change how you're paid. It is conceivable going forward that you will have a, one council member making more than another council member based on our recommendation. Our recommendation that is, if you're on the council four years, you'll get two-step increases, and those step increases will also include four years' worth of COLAs. Somebody brand-new coming to council goes all the way back to the beginning of the pay scale, when whatever that number is, and that number's going to grow every year because of cost of living. So just like classified, non-classified employees, step one does go up every year because of the cost of living number. We use the cost of living number of two and a half percent. That is not factored into any of these numbers for the, for the council or for the, for the president. I'll discuss the mayor in a moment. There's, there's a mistake in our calculations. So you'll see that the council, first year, which would be January of twenty-six, would be making seven hundred and twenty dollars. Two years later, there would be an automatic bump to seven forty-five, seven seventy-five, seven ninety-five, eight twenty-six. What that does is it takes a lot of the responsibility out of this committee meeting every two years to decide what is the perfect number for you all. Well, you'll have a chance to vote on that, and you'll make, you'll make that decision what the perfect number is. This is our recommendation. Because the council president has additional responsibilities, and you all have lots of responsibilities, and, you know, I was on the council, you have some councils, councillors who put twenty, twenty-five hours in, and you have councillors that don't read the packet. That's just the name of government. We can't, we can't make you work any harder or any less harder. Okay? But a lot of you put a lot of money, responsibility. We believe that the council president has additional responsibilities above and, above and beyond the members of the council. They stand in for the mayor when the mayor's not there. You'll see that the recommendation for the council president was eight fifty, two years from now, eight seventy-nine, three years from now, nine-ten, and on forward. So looking at the council president's salary, what happens after two years if there's a new council president? And that's a good question. And that's going to be a discussion for you all, because do we want to bring that new council president at eight seventy-nine, or does that new council president come back at eight fifty? On our scale, he would come back at eight fifty, but that is a discussion that you may want to have. Does that? Or there's another open-ended question. What happens for a councillor who runs, serves four years, loses, or serves two years, loses, comes off the council for a period of two years, comes back on the council? Does that council come back in at the starting wage of step one, which will be higher every year? And it may be higher than what they, when they left. Or does that council come in at what he, he or she was making? And those are questions that we could not answer, because we, we don't know what the future has in front of us. But again, the numbers used was, the COLA number is two and a half, and the step increase is roughly one seventy-five. These increases in front of you for the council and for the president are based on one seventy-five, one point seven five percent every year. The COLA number is not factored into these increases, because we don't know what that would be. So that's the questions on the councilors and president. Before I jump to the next part of this presentation, are there questions on how we got there, or questions on the process that we used or are thinking?
Counselors? Counselor Porstman?
Not so much on the process, more on how many citizens came to just observe the...
As many, as many as there are here.
Or citizens, I meant to say.
As many citizens came to that meeting as there are here right now, who aren't elected officials or a citizen, or city employees. None.
None.
Okay. It was not advertised in the newspaper. It was not listed as, on a Sunday paper as an event. But so we had no, it was posted, as all city meetings are posted, it was posted outside the door in, in the city hall. And some folks picked up on this on one of the Facebook pages, but that was about it.
They didn't show up, obviously, the people that...
Oh, no, no. And we, we met at times that were very similar to work sessions, three and four o'clock in the afternoon was the time of our meeting, same as two years ago. And two years ago, we had nobody attend. We had one city employee attend one meeting, but no one else attended the meeting. City meetings just aren't fun to watch, I guess, unless there's something really hot to talk about.
I think paying your official would be a hot topic, but...
Questions about that? Okay, let me jump to the mayor now. As I said earlier, the mayor's salary is all over the board. We have city governments that pay their mayor less than what our current mayor gets, and will maybe have a city administrator. We have city governments that pay our mayor similar to what we pay our mayor with a city administrator. We have city governments that pay a lot more than we currently pay our mayor, and they have city administrators. So they're all over the place, but there is a theme that I would say, of the cities we surveyed, it's about a fifty-fifty blend between non, non-city administrator, supervisor, call it whatever title you want to call that person, plus the mayor's responsibility. Alrighty, this is where the chart has an error in it, and I need to correct the error. The recommendation of the group, and you have the minutes, so I don't need to go over what the voting record was, but the recommendation of the group was to start the mayor, or to recommend the mayor's salary be jumped to a hundred and six thousand, three oh three, which represents step four on the scale. If you look in front of you, you'll see that number doesn't, that number is nowhere on this, on that chart. And that's because I, I caught an error in this spreadsheet about an hour ago. Ninety thousand would be the first year's number, ninety-one, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-seven, ninety-six. But the, how we got to the one oh six number is, four years out on this chart, if you take two and a half percent average COLA, plus, plus what the jump in increases for the employees, together, it's about four and a half percent. So if you look at the jump in non-classified employees across the salary chart, it's about four and a half percent a year with the COLA in there, the average COLA. We're not sure what that's going to be every year. This was not calculated. Step four shows only, only the, the one point seven five, and that's the difference between what, on the skeps, the current skep, steps schedule that non-classified employees have, it's about one seventy-five every year their salary goes up, plus whatever the COLA is. So if you're following me, I was very confused in explaining that, we left off, we left off the COLA numbers. So if you look at that, that's a non, that's a non-COLA number. That is only a simple one and a half percent step every year. So if you went with that recommendation in step four, year four, this mayor would be making ninety-four thousand. Our recommendation was one oh six. But that also includes annual, that's, that also includes basically four years of COLA added up to step four. So if I didn't explain that clearly, there's a good chance I didn't. I'm open to, open to questions on how we came to that number. But again, our recommendation is to start the mayor out at one oh six. So this, this spreadsheet would then have to be corrected, or anywhere between that. Now, there was additional discussion beyond this. Additional discussion was what happens if there's a new mayor? Mayor chooses not to run. Does a new mayor come in at the current pay schedule of the mayor, or does it revert back? Or does it revert back? Our discussion said it should revert, revert back to step one. So a new mayor coming in should revert back to step one. Which on this chart is ninety thousand dollars. Next year, it's going to be ninety thousand dollars. Plus one point seven five, plus whatever the COLA is. So it'd go up every year, or you could lock, or you could lock it in at ninety, that's your choice to do that. The other recommendation discussion in the group was if the mayor decides, if a mayor decides to hire an additional personnel. A city administrator, a city supervisor to work underneath, beneath them on the day-to-day matters of running a city. The council should consider reducing the salary of the mayor. Uh, partially to offset the cost of what that position would cost the city. Sue Brown, did I miss anything? Jerry, here's your. Here's your chance to come up for a moment of fame. You've had plenty moments of fame, thank you very much, and thank you for doing this, I appreciate it. Your input was worthy and welcomed. Questions from the council on the mayor's aspect of this salary?
Counsel? Councilor Porchman?
I guess more of a comment, I'm, I really liked that you guys did think of the fact that. The mayor has been running without a city, a city administrator and I know it's a lot of work. Um, and puts probably more hours than your average eight-day. And as far as I know, the mayor is actually considered a part-time position here, uh, as far as city code goes. Obviously, the mayor does not put part-time, way, way beyond that. Um, so I appreciate that you guys put that in as far as a factor because that is like my concern with kind of bumping is. I, I think a realistic continuing to go forward if, whether that mayor reruns or if we get someone new. Having a city administrator, I think is going to be really important. Whether they decide to do that, I don't know, but I do really appreciate that you guys thought that out as well as starting back, I agree with that. I think that it would be, you get a new mayor, then they should start back at the beginning and then possibly see increases from there, so. I will say when this committee, when we talked about having this, I was hoping that more citizens were going to be involved. And that we would see, uh, kind of more input to what they felt, um, you know, whether that decrease or increase. Uh, I haven't seen that a lot and you guys are putting a lot of time in, um, to this and I really appreciate it. And so going forward, I think as a council, I really think we should consider is, is it worth continuing to have these? Meetings for the compensation review committee to be a thing, if you guys feel like it's worth it or?
May, may I answer that question?
Sure.
You're required by state code to have this meeting every two years. The change of government. Kicks that code into, into existence and so every two years, a, a, uh, this committee has to meet to make a recommendation. Two years from now, it could be nothing more than rubber stamping what we discussed this year. We don't do an evaluation, we don't do an evaluation of positions. That was a recommendation that was made two years ago, but again, probably the best rec, the best evaluation is you are elected officials. If you don't get re-elected, that's probably a fair evaluation of, of your performance. Okay, on top of that, we did discuss the mayor. And there are no state codes that says how much the mayor has to work, part-time, full-time. There could be a new mayor starting January first who decides to work ten hours a week. And outside of a recall, there is no methodology to remove that mayor and you can't make the mayor work any harder. So, uh, just to make sure you, everybody in the council knew that, there's no requirements. There's no definition of a part-time mayor or a full-time mayor. We make assumptions. Other questions?
Councilor Klein?
I just have a comment. Um, so these committees take hours to deliberate thoughtful ideas and I was told by a, a committee member. Um, that the city council plays favors and throws all their hard work away and we don't listen. So I feel like this would be a good example to listen to our committee that we put together, you guys spend lots of time. Thinking about this and doing your research and putting this together to present to us. And then, um, most years it seems like we just sort of, we, we throw away, so. Um. I feel like. I feel like since we have to do this every two years anyways, um, the, the increments. Aren't, aren't necessary, but I like where you're going with the percentages and keeping it basic and, and, and having, you know, the. Over-the-board increase, I feel like increasing it might bring us more, um, more qualified candidates in the future. As far as when election times come, um, it might give them a little more in, incentives because. As I know as council members and, and the mayor, you get a lot of flack from the public for doing your job and. Um, it's very taxing on your family and, and yourself and you see a lot of people not, not run again because. Of, of all the attacks, so. Just something to think about.
Yeah, speaking on behalf of our committee, I don't think any of us feel that what we did is wasted time and energy. And if the council decides to use what we recommend, great, if they don't. Again, that's why you, you are elected officials, you use your judgment. After you've gotten input from all sources and, um, just like the public hearing earlier, a lot of information, now you make a decision. None of what we said is wasted if you, it's just, our job is to inform you of a small group that feels this is what you're entitled to.
Also, um, if I could just jump in here just for a quick minute, thank you Bob, um, and Sue. Um, let me just share a couple of things with you, Bob brought it up, Idaho statute is Title fifty, chapter two. That requires, um, the city council. To fix the compensation by ordinance and then publish it at least seventy-five days before any general city election, which will happen this November. Um, and so one or more of us may or may not be here, so we're, we're looking at this for the future. And also within our city code, uh, it's, there's section, uh, two dash twenty-two and two dash twelve that both address the same, basically. Copies this, uh, statute and puts it in city code to say this is how we're going to do it. But I do, uh, I, what I would like to ask the council to consider tonight, appreciate all the hard work that, um. Our compensation review committee's done, but we just received this tonight, I just saw this tonight, um, for the first time. I could have looked at it earlier today, but I chose not to. Um, and I'm not certain that our, um, city attorneys had a chance to look at it either, so. I'm going to ask, uh, council, uh, as a courtesy, this is an action item, but we don't have to vote on this tonight. Uh, but as a courtesy to our, um, city attorney, I need to make sure that everything's kookum on this, I appreciate the work that the committee did. But this is a little bit different than what's ever been done in the past. And, uh, and I think it's, I think it's very forward-thinking, I agree with all the reasons that, um, Bob presented because. Um, we all work for the people and if the people are not happy with, um, the performance of any of us, certainly the council in two years. Could make quick adjustments and they should in the mayor's salary, if the mayor's not performing.
Then you're paying for what they're doing and, and I think that's fair in politics. Um, but I think I need to ask, um, the city. Look at this and just make sure that setting compensation such as you've suggested here meets the intent of the statute. So before we approve that, if that would be all right with everyone, I would just, um, like to ask that unless our city attorney is. Prepared to make a statement tonight, but, um, if she's not, she doesn't look like she is, so, uh, council. Council, if that's okay with you, that's what I would ask, uh, before we direct staff to draft the ordinance that we can just maybe have our city attorney. Um, spend the necessary time looking at this to make sure we cross the Ts, knock the Is and then bring it back to us. If, if you're open to that.
I agree.
It's kind of me.
Our group would have no problem with that, again, the, the definition of what our job was is pretty broad. It recommendations, changes and considerations. It does not, the, the ordinance actually does not give you a specific guidelines. So it allows us a wide range of proposals and yes, using your city attorney is wise.
Well, I, I do appreciate that in respect that very much because we want to make sure that we stay, uh, within the lines on this, so.
Councilor Klein?
I also wanted to recommend that we get an updated, uh, sheet that shows the, the mayor's incremental increases.
Would that be possible, Bob, to get an updated schedule?
Yeah, of course. Um. Yes, yes, it is, it's, um, we're going to have to, yeah. We're going to have to, uh. Okay. One point seven five annuals.
If, um, if you could, um, do that and get it to our city clerk. Tanya Brockie, then Tanya will make sure that, um, it gets distributed to our city attorney first and we'll ask her to review that. And then distribute it to the council and then we can take this up at our next council meeting if that works. Again, we have to have a decision, again, it, it may not be for us, but for a future councillor or mayor. We need to have that at least seventy-five days before the election. And then I do want to say for the record, since we're doing this, um, if anyone is wondering, the filing period is August twenty-fifth to September fifth. For those positions, so, um. It's a nonpartisan race, so that'll be coming up, so counselors or anybody that's listening, that's, that's the schedule, so.
Mayor?
Councilor Porchman?
Uh, I'm trying to remember because it was a long time ago that we went over this code when I first got elected. I know that it was required of the council to review it, but was it required to have a compensation review committee due to state statute?
So council, what I remember was it used to be that the council just did that and somebody can correct me, but, um.
I think so.
When we changed our form, yeah, Councilor Schroeder was there, part of that group. Uh, when we changed the form of government, we had to rewrite our chapter two, which was the administration chapter for the city. And so, um, our city attorney at the time, Janet Gomez, uh, Councilor Schroeder, myself and.
Who was it? I was on it too.
Were you?
Okay.
All right, where's Councilor Porchman? And so, um, we went through the whole chapter and this was an item where when we talked about it. Uh, I had, uh, shared with the group that this is how the state legislature salaries are set. They have an independent compensation review committee that sets per diem and salary and all those kind of things. So to try to make it, uh, not as political or self-serving, just have a, a citizens group do that for us. And, uh, and then make the recommendation back to the council and try to bring some, uh, independent thinking to it, so.
Sir, mayor, that was my, just my question as far as, uh, the council reviewing that maybe and talking about if we feel like that is still, uh, viable. And it might be, I'm just bringing it up, a viable thing to, to say, do we want to continue to do the compensation review committee? Do, even as you guys feel if it's valuable or not, it sounds like it is and you don't feel like it's time wasted, so, um, that's really good to hear. But that, that was what I was referring to my earlier, uh, comment about just kind of making sure that we're still. Making use of our time and not wasting obviously our, our citizens' time that put a lot of effort into this.
Thank you, council, so I guess my response to that would be a good time to do that might be in January after the election. When you have a new council, uh, sitting and then they can rewrite chapter two if they want anything in there that they'd like to change. You know, and then that would govern for the next two years. Okay, well, if we're okay with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Bob and Sue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a lot of work. Very welcome.
Get on the right page here. Okay, council, next up we have Activision, item seven B. IB dash twenty-five dash zero one zero bid award, Twelfth Street, Warner Avenue to Airway Avenue, TR zero five nine. Considering awarding the IB dash twenty-five dash zero one zero, Twelfth Street, Warner Avenue to Airway Avenue. Brand TR zero five nine and brand project and life river corporation, Mountain West for a total of six hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents. And authorizing the mayor to sign the contract, but this is an action item and we have our public works director here with us. Uh, Dustin Johnson, welcome director.
Good evening, mayor, city council, Dustin Johnson, public works director. In, uh, ironically on a night where we, uh, uh, do the proclamation of the public works day, we have three items on the agenda tonight. That kind of encapsulates what public works generally does. How the city Lewiston tries to stretch our dollars and maximize the grants and the funding that are out there, so. Uh, while at the same time maintaining the infrastructure that we do have. So first up tonight is, uh, the Warner, it's the Twelfth Street sidewalk from Warner Avenue to Airway Avenue. Uh, I believe you may be familiar with this, this was the one that we applied for a grant which we were awarded, so that is the. Child protective, uh, child pedestrian safety grant. Uh, it is a lump sum, they, you outline the project, it had a threshold of a minimum amount, uh, so we rewarded the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for this project. We bid it out, uh, as the, the, the summary sheet outlines, uh, the bid came in. Uh, what I would consider significantly under engineer's estimate, so twenty-nine percent below engineer's estimate, we got three bids. Uh, so the total bid was, uh, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand and change. With that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, we were left with a balance of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand and change. Uh, those funds are coming out of the TIA fee, so that is the transportation impact fees. That, uh, are, uh, being paid for but with developers to offset the, the impact they are on the, on the transportation network. This particular project has been called out specifically with development up there with the high school and then also Orchard Elementary there. Uh, you know, on, along Thane there, that corridor of Twelfth Street is now, um, being traveled significantly more than it has in the past. With school-aged children going both directions to the elementary and the high school. So I think that, uh, basically summarized the project, uh, and I stand for questions.
Thank you, director of council, Councilor Porchman?
And I don't see where, and I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm, if this is a federal grants, right, not?
State grant.
They are state grants?
Yeah, it comes through LTAC.
Um, have you ever seen, and this probably haven't had an issue with this one, but when I was down for the AIC leadership class that I took. Some of the cities mentioned they've actually denied grants due to the amount of restrictions the grants had. And I was just wondering if we've ever had situations where it really was more cost-effective to use the grant because of all the restrictions that the grant has in place.
Yeah, when we shop grants, uh, there's oftentimes we don't apply for them just because they're so cumbersome for the qualifications. Or the projects that we, we, we need don't match what the grant is providing, so. I can't think of a grant that we've, uh, I'm sure there's one example where we were rewarded it and we ended up walking away from it. But I, typically we, we front-end look at that and know is this is going to be a good fit for us or not. Um, and typically what we'll do is we'll apply for it, um, if it's anywhere remotely and then we could kind of see how it plays out. But I can't think of one that we've turned away recently.
And, and most of those have been, uh, state grants?
This one, um, yeah, most, we've had most success, so, uh, local highway, LTAC. Um, is who we go through and that's a state agency and so, you know, there's safety money, I talked about, um, La, L SIP. Um, all these L, L, L acronyms, but L SIP is the safety money and that's the money that I, I announced last week that we have a grant. Uh, or an award of two million dollars for, uh, the resurfacing of Bryden Canyon, so. State is a lot easier to work with and they're, they're, they're in the business of helping local communities like Lewiston to, to keep up the infrastructure. Um, and you'll notice, um, you combine school zones and sidewalks, uh, they're, they're usually pretty, pretty. Um, generous with getting these grants, so we, we, at any one time, we have probably two or three in the hopper of either being constructed. Being completed or being designed. We just finished the one a couple of weeks ago up front of Jennifer, that was another one of those grants.
Okay, uh, yeah, it'd definitely be interesting to talk to our grant writer and, and some of those scenarios where. We felt we didn't want to take that grant because there was too many restrictions and, and it wasn't going to be really cost-effective. Uh, we actually had a state legislator there at our, at our meeting, our ASA leadership meeting, and they mentioned talking to them and saying. All of these restrictions are putting on is making it difficult for us to actually want to take those grants. Um, so I'd be curious, so I could have some data to back on some of that.
Most of it would be federal that we, we don't, because there's so much out there and they're so competitive. And if it doesn't meet our needs, it's not worth our time, where these Idaho grants, uh, particularly LTAC. Um, we, we've done so many of them and there's so much familiarity with them. It's, we, we usually know what we've got a pretty good chance, and this is one that we've been working on for a while. DEQ grants, uh, water and wastewater. chance. And this is one that we've been working on for a while. DEQ grants, water and wastewater, even stormwater, there are, there's more limited funds, and so those can be more challenging to get, even though we do seem to have pretty good success. We just haven't got that, you know, that big one, like, for the intake yet.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment. Thank you for, this is amazing, and I'm excited to see that, and I'm totally in support. I just had some questions that I wanted to get out. So thank you for answering those for me.
Councillor, councillor Klein?
I think, tagging on to Cassie, the grant that have restrictions, a good example of that would be like, community park and their water restrictions, and only, you know, having to use that land for certain, certain things, and looking and being able to look into the future and see if that's potential to keep doing that, that restriction. But I also was wondering if, what's, what's the idea of connecting the elementary school and the high school?
Well, it's mostly just the, so the district of school offices are on Twelfth, too. And so it wasn't necessarily connecting those to, to campuses. It's just that residential neighborhood that's in between the high school has a lot of kids walking to school, either to the high school now, or they've always gone to, to the Orchard Elementary. But now with the high school there, you're just seeing an influx of more pedestrians using that corridor. And nothing there for sidewalk, so.
Councillor Schroder?
I move to award IFB dash twenty-five dash zero-one-ten, Avenue to Airway Avenue Project to Knife Corporation, Mountain West, in the amount of six, six-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, sorry, three-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Mayor to, and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Okay.
Been moved by councillor Schroder, seconded by councillor Forssman, to award IFB dash two-five dash zero-one-zero, Twelfth Street Warner Avenue to Airway Avenue Project to Knife River Corporation, Mountain West, in the amount of six-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents, and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract. Is there further discussion? Senator Brockie?
Councillor President Kleberg?
Aye.
Councillor Wright?
Aye.
Councillor Forssman?
Aye.
Councillor Schroder?
Aye.
Councillor Klein?
Aye.
Councillor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Question carries. Thank you, councillors. Thank you, councillor Spickelmeier. Councillor, next up, we have item C, IFB dash two-five dash zero-one-four bid award, street preservation, seal and fog coat, TR zero-one-one, considering awarding the IFB dash two-five dash zero-one-four street preservation, seal and fog coat, TR zero-one-one, project to Herco Inc., for a total of five-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and sixty-five cents, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. This is an action item. Once again, we welcome our public works director.
Good evening, Mayor. As the mayor's already outlined, so this is our annual street preservation contract that goes out annually, and it kind of goes, again, last week, the work session, I talked about the importance of street preservation, keeping, taking care of roads that we do have that are in good shape. And so this is the program that we do every year. The residents, it's frustration for just about everybody involved, because it's usually the hottest time of the year, because that's when the material sticks best to the road. And of course, it's always blocking you from wherever you're getting to go. And so it can be a short-term minor inconvenience, but it helps the life of the street last longer. So as the mayor's already outlined, we got two bids on this. The, the bid, the lowest bid came in a little bit, five, a little bit, five and a half percent under engineer's estimate, for a total bid of five-ninety-nine, eight, eighty-three, and sixty-five cents. Most of the streets for this year's, oh, I guess, the way we determine which streets, so if you remember, probably two or three years ago, we did an entire survey of the pavement across the citywide. We get a pavement condition index, and then we kind of put that into our asset management software. We kind of tried to group them in neighborhoods. So, you know, it wouldn't be very efficient or very convenient for anybody to try and do pavement preservation, just the top ten list. So we try and group them in neighborhoods, so we can kind of hit that neighborhood, and then be done with it for five to ten years as far as chip seal. So this year's neighborhood is North Lewiston. So you'll, if you look through the packet, you'll notice the bulk of the streets are all in North Lewiston. There's a short segment on Thirteenth Street, and then a very small segment on Twenty-first Street. So those are the segments that we'll be treating, and I believe that is everything I have for you tonight. I stand for questions.
Director Johnson, I'd like to ask a quick question. On the agenda item history sheet, the action proposed is for five-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. And what I'm about to read to you is a different number.
Which number is that?
Well, we have what's called a little cheat sheet up here, and it shows five-ninety-nine eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. So I just want to make sure that the number is eight-hundred-and-eighty-three, not eight-hundred-and-thirty-three, before I entertain a motion for more.
I got, I got eight-eighty-three and sixty-five.
Eight-eighty-three?
Yep.
Thank you. Mayor? Councillor Spickelmeier?
Yeah, director, I was wondering, how much is remaining in the capital street fund after this?
I don't have an exact dollar amount, but I, I will say, since we, the, the one that we just awarded, and then this one, we have remaining money in that capital. And so staff is going to try and put together the reconstruction of the top of Fifth Street by Pioneer Park. I think we've recently had some comment on the dips there. So that's the next project. It's, that would require a budget amendment, because I don't believe it's in the budget, but we're going to try and see if we can get that out, and see if we can get that issue addressed. If you would like.
Thank you.
I could, I can come back to you, and, I mean, if it gets successfully put out, and a competitive bid is received, or a, a bid that is acceptable is received, I can come back and let you know, I will obviously let you know what's remaining in the capital budget, and then, you know, what, what that award would be.
Okay, thank you.
Because, yeah, it has been a good year, as far as our capital on transportation this year so far. Good bids.
Thank you, councillor Spickelmeier. Councillor Schroder?
I move to award IFB dash twenty-five dash zero-one-four, street preservation, seal and fog coat to Herco Inc., in the amount of, I hope this is the right one, five-ninety-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. Eight-thirty-three and sixty-five cents, right?
Should be five-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-eight-hundred.
Oh, eighty-three. Oh, okay. All right, so I will reread that.
Thank you.
Motion to award IFB dash twenty-five dash zero-one-four, street preservation, seal and fog coat to Herco Inc., in the amount of five-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and sixty-five cents, and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Second. Been moved by councillor Schroder, seconded by council president Kleberg, to award IFB dash two-five dash zero-one-four, street preservation, seal and fog coat to Herco Inc., in the amount of five-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and sixty-five cents, and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract. Clerk Brockie?
Councillor President Kleberg?
Aye.
Councillor Wright?
Aye.
Councillor Schroder?
Aye.
Councillor Forssman?
Aye.
Councillor Klein?
Aye.
Councillor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Thank you, director Johnson. Councillor, next up, we have item DRQ dash two-five dash zero-one, award, Southway Bridge Pier Three Rehab, Prent VR zero-zero-three, and Prent, considering awarding the RFQ dash two-five dash zero-zero-one, Southway Bridge Pier Three Rehab, VR zero-zero-three Project to Consor, North America Inc., in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. This is an action item. Director Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor. I believe I outlined this project a little bit last week. The work session, essentially, Southway Bridge is owned by the four entities that surround it, Clarkston, Lewiston, Esbers County, and Assotan County, with shared, equal, shared ownership of it. There has been an issue with Pier Three and Pier Four a little bit, with some scour and some damage that was done to the pier. It appears to be superficial, but we need to have somebody come in and take a look at it. And so the proposed project is to have Consor, the engineering firm, come in. There, it is due for its underwater inspection this summer. They'll do the inspection, look at the different scenarios as to how to mitigate any damages in there, and then come back with a full design and estimate for those damages, at which point we'll amend the, the agreement with all four entities, and make those repairs, and then move on. This has been similar, how we've done repairs in the past. We did this about five years ago with the surface. Actually, we started that ten years ago, and did the repairs five years ago on the surface. So the cost of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand is split four ways. So the city's share will be thirty-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars, but we will be, will be the carrier of that contract. So we will pay Consor, and then get reimbursed by the other three entities. So I will keep you in the loop as we learn more, but if not, I stand for questions.
Thank you, director, council. Councillor President Kleberg?
Yeah, before I make a motion, let us mention that we've been talking with this, or about this, at the MPO quite a bit, just reminding the other entities, which are also members of the MPO, that they better start their bake sales pretty quick, because they're going to need a little bit of money for this project. But I would make a motion to award RFQ twenty-five dash zero-zero-one, Southway Bridge Pier Three Rehab Project to Consor, North America Inc., in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second. Been moved by council president Kleberg, seconded by councillor Wright, to award RFQ dash two-five dash zero-zero-one, Southway Bridge Pier Three Rehab Project to Consor, North America Inc., in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Clerk Brockie?
Councillor President Kleberg?
Aye.
Councillor Wright?
Aye.
Councillor Forssman?
Aye.
Councillor Schroder?
Aye.
Councillor Klein?
Aye.
Councillor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Thank you, director Johnson. Thank you, councillor Spickelmeier. Councillor, next, we'll move to Roman numeral nine, unfinished and new business. Item may city councillor comments. Comments shall not be related to an item currently before the city council, or an item that may come before the city council in the foreseeable future, and shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Councillor Forssman?
And just a reminder that on the twentieth of this month, that's next Tuesday, we will have the vote for Main Street project. So I encourage you to tell your friends, tell your family, tell everybody to go out and vote. Hopefully, we have a really high-turning vote turnout. That's where your voice is heard, and this is a good opportunity to have your voice heard, to where you want to see the future of our city go, and the future of Main Street. So you get out and vote, and let us know what you think.
Thank you, councillor. Further comments? Councillor President Kleberg?
Now, to follow up on councillor Forssman, this is an important vote, and I can't stress it enough. I've talked to quite a few folks in town, and I think I've gotten a few converts. But, you know, the fact of the matter is, the water problem down there kind of scares me a little bit. What really scares me is the, the state of our sewer system that's down there. It's buried twenty feet underneath the ground. If we had a catastrophic failure of that, we'd have wastewater backing up a long ways, and backing up uphill, popping out of manholes and stuff like that. That ought to scare everybody in this community. On a lighter note, there's going to be big jet boat races up in St. Mary's next weekend. For those people that like that stuff, this is part of the world, I don't know if it's the World Series or whatever, but should be a fair amount of boats. I've heard there's going to be probably fifteen to sixteen boats this time. There was only six down at Riggins here a couple of weeks ago. But if anybody likes that, it's on the St. Joe River, and kind of headquartered up in St. Mary's.
Thank you, councillor president. Councillor Schroder?
Again, on the May twentieth ballot, for us to take care of the infrastructure that is deep down in the, on our Main Street, it's not, it's totally about getting those things fixed. Like councillor president Kleberg said, if there is anything that happens with that sewer line, and we do not get this bond done at this time, we are going to floating in sewage, and that is not what we want. I don't think anybody wants it. It's all about what the infrastructure under the city street is. And we can take care of all the peripheral things later, but let's get the holes dug and the pipes placed. Yeah, that's all I have on that.
Thank you, councillor. Further council comments? About item B, city boards and commissions, delays on updates. Councillor Schroder?
Okay, at the MPO meeting, you know, the Main Street project has been number one for a very long time, and things move around and change, but it, it really didn't move around number one very long. It stayed there. But we do have some changes. The Eighth, Eighth Street, Ninth Street grade is now going to be done in 2026, and Snake River Avenue will be done in 2028, and then they'll start Bryden in 2030. So those things now have a date to them.
Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Schroder?
Valley Vision's got some.
Forssman, councillor Forssman?
I don't even know what my name is. Valley Vision has had, they have exciting news coming down the pipeline. Obviously, they will make that announcement, but just make everyone aware. And they'll be starting to meet with the councillors, one-on-one, to kind of talk about some of those developments, where they're headed, as well as some maybe asks coming up in the budget. So just kind of keep that in mind when you're listening to them. They have been a very active board, and they have very dedicated people. I would encourage you to ask to come to a meeting, to see their work in action. It's very eye-opening. As well, as historic preservation had a couple of meetings, ones that I wasn't required to be at, actually preferred that I wasn't there. But they're staying busy as always, and accommodating our citizens that want to make improvements to those zones that are within the historic district. Be back? Again, we won't meet for a while. So Public Works One, to be continued. Not as old a boards I have.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor President Kleberg?
Yeah, just one more. I forgot. Tomorrow is, we have a meeting for the Urban Renewal Agency, which is at City Hall Back Room, and we will have Elam and Burke there giving a lesson on Urban Renewal Agencies 101. So primarily for the council, if anybody wants to see what really goes on with the URA, you're more than welcome to attend, and should be an interesting presentation.
Councillor Schroder?
I know it's been announced, but I just want to announce it again. Public Works Day is May twenty-one, two-twenty-two, at the Fair Building, nine to two, and it's a lot of fun. Let the kids take grandpa and grandma to it, and it's great. Hope to see you there.
Thank you, councillors. And while I'm still doing my best to attend the Cemetery and Urban Forestry Commission meetings, I may miss one or two here and there, but we're, we're going to, and we are, writing some updates to the cemetery rates, got those in on time. And then when our new parks and retroactive gets here, we'll be getting a little bit more aggressive about some of the capital projects at the cemetery, including subject of trees, and it will. of trees and, you know, some of our urban forestry issues. We have a lot of work to do, so. But we're moving forward on that. I just want to say thank you to all the citizens and staff and council members that serve on these boards and commissions. It's very important to our business and all that you do there. On Mayor's comments, I would like to echo Counselor President Kleberg's comments on URA 101. If, if, counselors, if you have time and you want to learn a little bit more about urban renewal districts, Elam and Burke do a wonderful job with that subject. And why it may be of interest to you is because during this last legislative session, there was some new URA legislation that talks about URA's and their establishment and disestablishment, and you may hear more of that in the coming days. And so I want to know how that all happens. Tomorrow would be a good time to go and ask the experts those questions, and they should be able to tell you about that because it's going to come before you, I promise, here in the very near future. So take advantage of those experts being here. With regards to our budgets and everything going on there, I certainly want to thank Director Amy Gordon and her staff. It's not going to be too long before they are going to be very, very, very busy. And so anything that you can do to help in that process, if there's materials you need, I can certainly work with you to try to get you some informations on budget manuals, the budgeting process and these kind of things. And they're, the ones that I have are produced by the Association Idaho Cities, and it's very good information, and it might help with some of your budget decisions going down the road. I'd also like to say thank you to Carol Maurer. She's our Communications Director, and I know she's been reaching out to staff, but also to the council members to maybe do just a little mini-piece, you know, she puts them out on our city website, and I, I think it's a good teaser for those who may be interested in either following online or coming to a meeting to see you in person, talking about the issues and maybe pique their interest some and get them to come in. So I think that's going to be very positive for us, and so I just want to say thank you for that, a different approach, creative way maybe to engage the public a little bit better. So, agenda topics, Item D, Council. I will go to Roman numeral 10, adjournment. Second. Been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor President Kleberg to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Question carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.